Yeah, I guess I am. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could remain standing for a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. You may be seated. And Mr. Levis, if you could do the safety notification, please.
Yes, so in case of emergency, please exit to the doors either to your left or your right behind you. You get out into the foyer, you go to your left to the parking lot, or right to the front of the building.
Thank you. And Mr. Florio, if you could read the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools for us, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Coventry Public Schools, with community partnerships, educate, inspire, and motivate students to be lifelong learners.
Thank you. Just so the public knows, the school committee met around 5:30 for executive session. There were a couple of votes taken, one for our schooling, our homeschool requests, and the vote was four to zero. Mr. Florio wasn't, had not arrived yet, which is why it's not five to zero. And then our second voting was for, uh, what? No, oh, the executive session minutes, sorry. We voted for the executive session minutes and then the homeschooling request. That, the homeschooling request was five to zero. That being said, is there a motion from the committee to seal the records of the executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to seal the records of the executive session.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to, so we're not going to do the personnel? We have to do personnel, right? Moving on to approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes, minutes on 5/24/18?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of, of 5/24/18 as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to personnel, our reference number two. Mr. Levis, did you want to comment on any of these?
Sure, just on the first one, the resignation of Crystal O'Brien. Crystal's been an outstanding employee, really helped, I know, since Sarah's been on. I think Sarah could speak to it, but she's done an outstanding job in really helping us drill down to our financial systems and accounting. Crystal has a great opportunity and we wish her the best.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve resignation, Crystal O'Brien, accountant slash purchasing agent for the district effective July 6, 2018.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified resignations, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Kathy Baruchka, business teacher at Coventry High School, effective June 30, 2018.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Kristen McQuiggin.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Kristen McQuiggin, speech-language pathologist for the district, effective June 30, 2018.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to classified resignations, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Deborah Fleckquist, teacher assistant, intent to support ASD at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the purpose of retirement, effective July 1, 2018.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified leaves without pay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a leave without pay for Bethany Levitt, inclusion teacher at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Shanna Factor.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a leave without pay for Sharon Factor, .8 teacher at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified appointments, did you?
Sure, I just wanted to say, I know Mr. Berset's here, and the first appointment is appointing Lisa Johansson as the social studies curriculum coordinator, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, Matt, I don't know how many years you've been the curriculum coordinator for social studies, but, many years. And I just wanted to thank him publicly for all of your work in leading that department. And, and I think also we're excited with Lisa Johansson. You know, Lisa was recently a finalist for renowned Teacher of the Year, and I think she'll do an excellent job replacing that. So just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Berset and also Lisa.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Lisa Johansson, regular 1.0, social studies curriculum coordinator at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year through 2021, 2022, 2022 school years, four-year term.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Don Polano.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Don, Dawn Polano, one year only, 1.0, special education curriculum coordinator at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Jessica Blanchett.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Jessica Blanchett, regular 1.0, intensive support teacher, CLA at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And finally, Erin Coin.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Erin Coin, 1.0 PVC, what does that mean?
District.
Professional Development Coordinator.
Professional Development Coordinator for the district, school, for the, for the districts, for the school year 2018-2019.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, I just want the public to, oh, you do have to do that, okay. So we are going to table several of the items on our agenda tonight, only because we have, only because we have to recess into executive session, and we expect to be there for a little while. So the things that we are going to do, the first, we're going to do the field trip requesting, and the Rhode Island, I wrote it down, and the Rhode Island Learning Champions presentations. And then we're going to talk about budget as well. So if you're here for some other reason on that agenda, you know, you probably don't have to stay, but if, I just wanted to warn you that we are going to break up our meeting tonight, which we usually typically don't do. We wait till the end of all the items and go into executive session, but we're not going to do that tonight. So, huh? So the first thing we're going to do, first item will be the strings, so that we can let our students go home. So you guys have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Costa, Mr. Reynolds, from Middle School. My name is Bill Smith, and I want to help, we thank Mr. Levis for allowing Mr. Costa and I to continue with the writing of the curriculum, which took place in mid-May. And we're going to present curriculum for ninth through 12th grade. So I have a brief slide presentation, but I wanted to give you some hard copy of what we're actually going to be putting in the written docs. So, and I know it's a little tricky, so if you do have any particular questions, we will see. You guys make me proud as a Rhode Island College graduate.
It's okay, just got a few of the string players playing. They're able to come out tonight, and so Simon's going to do a quick piece on his cello. Piece by handle, and then we'll do our presentation, and then Nicole will play, and then we'll put something together, three of us together, and show them what we derive.
Okay. Good.
Again, this presentation is brief, but I wanted to tell you that we're, the students that you actually see tonight are part of a group of 21 students that are currently enrolled in the string program, they're going to be eighth graders next year. And this will be all announced through the high school in 1920 school year. Even though we actually did get the program of studies permission, we actually have a string ensemble in the program of studies for next year. There were only three kids, and I actually have the one in band, which is not the best situation, we talked about that last year about this time. So to have this come into the high school and be one of the few high schools that will have an orchestral program is really going to be exciting for the kids. You know, obviously witness right here, a lot of dedication and practice in the students. So, Mr. Costa, that's the second book, the Orchestra Music Festival, this is an orchestral festival that sells at South Kingstown High School. And as I mentioned, this is going to be.
And it's on April 1st of March, April 1st, 2019. So with six seventh eighth graders, we're hoping to take a string orchestra of at least 30 students, violins, violas, and cellos, and adding the third piece will add woodwinds, brass, percussion. It's an actual orchestral piece. So that'll be, can't wait to see the feedback from the judges on that one. So we'll have great news for you next, next year.
So again, in the 1920 school year, the budget impacts with 22 MTP, so it'll be part of the regular music teacher schedule. Plus, there will be some additional supplies, literature, and after books, which I approximated at $500, depending upon what that would be. Generally speaking, and Tony, you can speak to this, all these students own their own instruments. So the only big-ticket items would be that you would have a double bass, most likely purchased by the school, and that would be something that you would have to handle.
They all have the instruments.
Right. And if you have any questions, so, units two, again, we concluded with the middle school curriculum, which I thank you for adopting last year. And we decided in our meeting in May that we would mirror the college school and pop them apart. So those are the hard copy documents that we have in front of you. Now, each one of those is actually 10 units, and those units are absolutely, they're melded together during the school year, along with selected literature that the kids would perform. Now, the nice part about it is we can actually include our winds, can play orchestral music too, instead of the regular concert band literature, marching literature. So that would be another event that those kids will, well, they'll see for the first time in the 1920 school year, which would be great. And then, the last, the surrounding districts. And I know this is CTC, we talked a little bit about this as far as offering pathways. We do currently have pathways in music education performance, using technology is pending. There's much concerns with that, and the state of the art and industry standard is pro tools. And we're looking at a lot of money for that right now, and we certainly don't want to talk money right now, tonight. So we're going to look at that. Plus, for the surrounding districts, if Coventry has this in the 1920s school year, you may get some other district kids come. Citrus does not have it, my knowledge, Les Horro doesn't have it, and then Exeter Westerns does not have it. So it'll be something for kids to look at. And then, finally, questions or concerns. And I know I put a lot of literature in front of you, so if you do have any questions even after tonight, yes, Ed.
Ed Mockwood.
Yes.
Remember Ed Mockwood?
Uh, very well.
You and Tony, you and Tony put a lot of time in with him. I think he would approve of this. I think he'd be very proud of all of this.
He was the orchestral director. I think we had mentioned last year real quick that we don't come from a formal string background, being academic English. It's definitely my Achilles heel, and Mrs. Webster, Simon's mom, has been a tremendous help. We've taken lessons, and it's, it's only in its second year. But definitely, I know Citrus doesn't have a program, because there's a teacher in my building that approached me if I knew any string teachers. And she, her daughter's a sixth grader, and they're very disappointed, because they wanted to play violin, but there's no place to play it. So this could create, you know, a little bit of an opportunity, and I know we're always looking for that at the high school level. So that's, that's a positive. The three students you'll see tonight are part of a fantastic class that I have. And I knew two of them were coming, which was a surprise, but we'll add, we'll add it in in a minute. If you could give me a second, this is Nicole, Nicole, this is the piece she played at solo ensemble, and she got a superior rating, a minuet by Bach. She'll play a little of that and get some questions, and then I'll show you what, one of the pieces we do, a couple, we'll play a couple of lines of it, before you join in with the show.
Just expand on solo ensemble, solo ensemble is a festival which run by the Rundus Education, and they have to go off to perform solo in front of the judge.
So next year, we'll, we're going to do three pieces at the festival, and this will be the second one. So we'll just do a little bit of it. We'll try to squeeze on the, on the stands if we can here, so. So we'll just do, we'll do the first two lines, okay?
Bill, you're getting quite a team at the high school. I'm getting, you're getting quite a team.
Nice kids in the building.
It's Sharra.
So this, this year, Dan Merrill's has been able, because of scheduling, which we appreciate at the middle school, our administrator is helping us out. Dan helps with the rehearsals, so he's been with the orchestra, he's been with the band, which is great. So the transition, if it ever happens, when I go to a high school, he can take over, so the succession plan should be seamless for the students of the program. So this is called Hunter's Car, we're just going to do a little bit for you, because I know we're a question of pride. And we're doing it because women came, which is great, thank you for helping. So everyone's scheduled this time of the year. So guys ready for the beginning, for a special, and we'll do a few lines, and I'll stop. So one, two.
You're done?
Thank you.
I just want to, I'm going to let the rest of the committee obviously comment too, but I just want to thank the students. It's such a, such a joy to hear you guys play strings. And I'm so happy that we were able to fund this program, and so glad that the teachers wanted to do this, and, and give this opportunity to our students. I just wanted to just mention to the young lady that my sister played violin, and, and we always knew she was having a bad day. I know she was frustrated with herself a couple of times, and she did an absolutely beautiful job. But my sister used to, we used to live in an up and down, you know, there was a second floor to the apartment we lived in. And every time we were downstairs and my sister made a mistake on her violin, she'd pound the floor. So my mother always knew, uh-oh, Terry's having a bad day, because she would pound the floor. But the, in my feeling, the saying went that my mother, my, the oldest took violin, because my mother could afford it, the second one took flute, and I sang in the chorus. the chorus because they ran out of money. So I am really, really pleased to see strings back here. Actually, my daughter wanted to play violin, and there wasn't a program, and so she did piano instead. So I just want to just commend all of you for just a really excellent job. And I'm really looking forward to seeing a symphony at the high school and at the middle school, too. You guys do an amazing job. I had a chance this past year to go in and listen to, I think it was the seventh grade. And it was just, in fact, she might have played that, that day. And so this is the second time I've heard her, so, so just great. Anyway, I'm, I'm.
Thanks, Bill.
Go down, I don't know if you want to say anything.
Nicole, you know why you have an amazing teacher? Because he had amazing teachers. And Mr. Smith is an amazing teacher as well at the, at the high school, and I've known them since they were young. And when they were, they were hot shots. They were very, very good musicians. Mr. Conser.
They're still hot shots. They're still hot shots. Come on, what do you mean? Used to be.
They were.
Brass attack.
That's right. Absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. You're learning, Nicole, you're learning. And that's why God put erasers on pencils. You'll get better, and you'll have a great teacher. That's all I have to say.
Donna?
I think they were absolutely amazing. Nicole, you, to get up in front of all those judges and to get a superior rating, that is, that's courage. And to get up in front of us, that's even more courage. And I know, I know because I'm a musician myself, that every one of my family plays an instrument. So you, you have an amazing talent, and to play strings is a very difficult thing to do. And you all sounded wonderful.
Absolutely.
It's just, and it's, I think it's just wonderful that you're bringing this program to Coventry. You know, we, we've got so many things to be proud of in, in this town.
We have to thank you for your support, too. This goes back to last year. So you guys.
Well, it goes to show you that, you know, our support has really brought out the best in people.
Yeah. James?
I'll just repeat what I said last year. You know, when I learned we didn't have a string program, I was like, what do you mean we don't have a string program? Because in the community I grew up in, we, we had a string program, and, and a lot of those students went on to be, be very successful. I have a lot of friends from high school who are, made a career, made a life out of being musicians. It's, it's a, for people who say it's not a career path, it certainly can be. And it's fulfilling one at that. So great, thank you for playing for us. When I was your age, I hated playing, I played trumpet in school. I hated playing trumpet, especially solo. So I give you so much credit for doing that. At least when you're in a group, you can kind of hide the mistakes. Can't do that when you're solo, you're out there. So you have so much courage. Thank you so much. It was, it was a pleasure hearing you play.
And I would just like to thank all the, all the students who came and played for us. It was, it was a treat for us. It was a very nice way for us to start our school committee meeting. We have a lot of important business to do tonight, and it was a wonderful way to start. So thank you. Most of you know that my daughter's a middle school music teacher. I used to play the piano, and my son made an attempt at violin. So I've been through all of those phases. He's no longer playing the violin, but we did have an attempt. But I'll tell you, I am thrilled to see a curriculum. This is the first time anyone has presented us with a curriculum. Sometimes we hear that there is one, but we never see it. And so I would like to give kudos to all of the teachers who participated or the staff that worked on putting together a curriculum. We need focus, we need some standardization and consistency, and so I'm pleased to see that we have this, this material. So thank you so much. It's an important way to build a program. Thank you.
Were there any other comments from the dais, Mr. Levis, before I put it out to the public?
I'll just say, I, I, unlike the committee, I have no musical talent or skill. But what I will say is that, you know, through this, and we're going to talk about the budget later on, but through this entire process, there've been many people talking about cut this, cut this, and I feel that music is as important as any other subject we offer, as are our sports, as are, you know, all the different programs we offer. And, you know, I gotta tell you, most of my job, I'm not, I'm not enjoying lately. But, so when I see students, and Mrs. Smith knows, I go into the classroom, I go in there often, because it's just, it's amazing, the passion that you guys have, both the teachers and most of our teachers, have for their students and their content. But for me, it is just something, like I said, I've never been a musician, never, but there's something magical about going in and listening to students, whether it's the Rhode Island College professor that I, I met in your program, or just going in and seeing Mr. Smith, forty students there, but it's like he's teaching each one individually as you're playing a piece. And I think we can never lose sight of that. So I, I want to thank you for coming tonight, taking your time, and I appreciate the work. And, you know, to have excellence is, that's what we're always talking about, and I think that's what you're, you're presenting. And I just want to thank you very much.
Any comments from the citizens gathered? Again, again, yeah, we'll do another, we should do a standing ovation for these kids. So I, I did want to thank the parents also for bringing your children here and sharing their talent with us. And I think we, we kind of hinted at the fact that we've had kind of a tough week. So this was just really something, these are the kind of things that, that make you still want to serve on a school committee when things get rough. So I thank our students for bringing a little light to us. Tomorrow, we have CHS graduation, so those are the things that make it worthwhile when we see the accomplishments of our students. So I will dismiss you guys if you want to get home and let your students get a good night's sleep and do your homework. So again, thank you so much for coming. We really, really appreciate it.
See you tomorrow night, Bill. Take care.
Okay, so now we're doing our straight ones. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the Rhode Island Learning Champions presentation.
So we have Tiffany.
Tiffany Riche.
Enrica Sarin.
Yep. Ready?
All right, we're ready. Good evening, how are you all? Thank you for having us. Just a little bit tonight on a discussion that we started with Mr. Levis and Ms. Andries regarding the involvement of Coventry Public Schools with the Rhode Island Learning Champions, and we just wanted to enlighten you tonight on the work that we've been doing over the past few months. So the Rhode Island Learning Champions is actually a collaborative effort that's happening between RIDE, the Rhode Island Department of Education, and also the Great Schools Partnership. And essentially, we're trying to define what is proficiency and how does that relate to proficiency-based learning? So we started with two cohorts of one hundred selected educators and also administrators. Within the first cohort, we had a collection of Coventry, either admin or teachers that were involved, Kelly Arnekes, who's here tonight, also Lynn Burke, Julie Boyle, Chuck Branchow, Toni Marcella, Reka, and myself. And within the first part of the cohort, we were thinking about what is proficiency in terms of defining it? How could we assess proficiency with developing different rubrics? And then we started getting into very content-specific work within our different disciplines. And then essentially, we decided, Reka and myself, had decided to join on for the second cohort, to also welcome in a new group of educators and administrators and kind of show them what we've been doing, and then move the process forward in terms of trying to, again, define proficiency and come up with what RIDE and Great Schools Partnership would acknowledge as being proficient types of instruction. So that was the goal really of Cohort Two, and we're still within that and moving forward with it. Obviously, we're, we're hoping that graduates can critically and collaboratively work together and think, and also hopefully act as creative, self-motivated, culturally competent learners and citizens within the realm of education.
This was done, it started in two thousand seventeen. The first part was done through webinars and meetings that we actually had to attend throughout the summer. We finished building the proficiency rubrics at that point. And then in two thousand eighteen, at this point, we were working on developing specific rubrics for tasks that will assess certain bundles of NGSS. So we are, is to, we'll be piloting, I know I'm piloting one of the parts that belongs to the middle school at this point. Personally, I got involved in this when the Great School Partnership did some of the work with our school. And they had not, they never got to the point of helping us develop tasks. That's the part I was actually interested in. So right currently, we're actually in the process of doing that, so I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to that.
So within the Coventry High School Science Department, I'm hoping that what I'm learning as we go through, and how to write these rubrics, how to assess proficiency, even what is proficiency, and how, how is RIDE and Great Schools Partnership defining it, I'm hoping that I can take this knowledge and bring it back within my department and also within the district to share with other educators what does proficiency look like, and specifically standards-based proficiency. So that was not new to me, but just how to develop the rubrics, as Reka has mentioned, how to write very good lessons and projects that are based in proficient learning, which is eye-opening. And I'm very happy that I was part of that and that I'm continuing to also be a part of that. Also, down at the bottom, how to layer, for me specifically in the, in the realm of science, if you look at our NGSS science, specific standards, there's three different core ideas, if you will. There's the science and engineering practices, we also have disciplinary core ideas and cross-cutting concepts. To write rubrics that incorporate all of that takes a lot of time. And this process has really, like I said, helped me to measure students. So, you know, you can say we have content standards, are we really, though, measuring what students know according to what these standards are hoping that they know? So that, like I said, is, I would say, a big benefit to this process going forward. And also, my other hat that I wear at the high school is a PBGR coordinator, and the good news is RIDE, Great Schools Partnership, and other districts were just, they, they could not believe what we have done in terms of our work creating a proficiency-based transcript at the high school, where we're tracking students according to learner expectations that we've developed, and also various core proficiencies that we've developed. So they were kind of blown out of the water in terms of what we've done so far before something like this, the Great Schools Partnership and RIDE collaborative effort was put together. So they were, they were like, wow, this is amazing, that you guys are already kind of a step ahead. Also, I'm hoping that through this process, I'm, myself, I haven't asked Reka, but I would be more than willing, if anyone wants professional development across the district, would be happy to share with other teachers, other educators, and administrators the process going forward, if they need help writing lessons, to make sure that they're meeting proficiency and also attaching it to content standards. Just, it was a good refresher for myself to go through this process and see that.
For me, besides working on writing the curriculum, writing the lessons that are layered with the three different dimensions, it has been more of an eye-opener in the sense that changing my outlook in what is important for my students, whether we should be pushing content or really getting them to become a learner. And I think the way the NGSS is put together, it really helps students become a learner, become curious, become interested. And it's helping me take those steps where I'm willing to take risks, let, let things get out of control a little bit in the classroom. And more than that, helping me talk to the parents and try not to, try to help develop a mindset that grade is not everything, that it is very important for the kids to become good learners, learn good strategies, that they carry with them. And it's not just about grades. That has, I'm actually hoping that next year I will implement that by actually having parents come in where they're sitting down and having a conversation with me about what I'm using and what I'm doing in the classroom. I thought about doing that this year, but it didn't happen, so I'm hoping to start that next year. And whereas, working with other teachers, I'm more of a model type of, I, I like to do things by modeling and, and working with others. And I think we already do that by working through, working together in the department, bringing in the resources that I've learned from that, from this experience into the department.
And then going forward, in two days in July, we'll be meeting again with a collection of the educators to write specific lessons that we can then pilot in the classroom and just to see where are we in terms of the proficiency and learners. Yeah. Is there any questions?
So I, I, um, so I'm trying to understand this. You have, you have been learning processes by which you could develop standards to measure proficiency, is that correct?
So we have standards. We have content standards. We also have, within our own school, at the high school, proficiency standards, learner expectations. And we're trying to figure out what is proficiency according to a RIDE definition, Great Schools Partnership? And are we meeting their definition of proficiency through what we're doing, our lessons, our content?
So you two are piloting programs, and how are you going to spread the word, so to speak, at the high school or middle school? What's the process to indoctrinate other people, to get them to buy into this process, to do the work that's required to be able to take learning to the next level and be able to measure proficiency? What's, what's next?
So at the high school, from the middle school, at the high school, we have a professional development board where teachers can sign up to kind of do little mini lessons on things you've learned, things you'd like to share. And so that, I would see going forward as a way to incorporate what I've learned into current processes for the next four years at the high school.
So that's like voluntary, people come into the professional development center and they can learn this process?
Yes, and we'd be more than willing, you know, to do any other type of session, even not after school, but later at night if people wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
And in the middle school, we work as a team, department teams, and develop lessons go through it. We try to make sure that everyone's teaching the same thing, and that requires that we get together and look at the lessons and decide what works, what does not. So it goes through multiple eyes, and they get a chance to either see what I, I have to contribute from here, or what they can bring in. So sometimes, it's just a matter of working together.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you both, sorry. I just want to thank you both for being involved in the program. It sounds like really exciting work. It's nice to hear that Coventry was kind of ahead as far as some areas, and we're looking forward to see how this improves our kids' proficiency, quite frankly, because it really is all about that, and that is certainly part of our vision to increase student proficiency in all areas. So it sounds like you're on the, the right track, and I commend you for your work and your excitement about it, and I'm sure you're going to bring that excitement to our students and make them be even more interested in science and engineering and all those good things that they may or may not need in their future if they choose to decide to do that kind of work. So thank you so much. It's very exciting. Maybe you can come back and tell us what you've seen, the results of some things that seem to be working. We'd love to hear from you again, I think. I don't know if any, any other members of the committee wanted to comment? Where else at? Mr. Levis?
Sure. I just want to thank you. I think in our original, the first
Sure. I just want to thank you. I think in our original, the first round of Learning Champions, I think Coventry, we had, I think, the most individuals from one community, which is a testament, because it was a process. It wasn't just you send your name and, and they select you. So there was a process. And the other thing, too, is I think about just the passion in terms of engaging students, and I love when you're speaking about the grades, because what is a grade? You know, that's a whole nother conversation. But just the, the level of engagement and then, you know, the, the part about having the parents understand, because it's really, you know, if you're familiar with Webb's Depth of Knowledge, you know, and really that, those, those level fours, you know, really getting kids to understand. And, and I love the fact that you modeled taking risks, because that's what we want. You know, we want kids to take risks and to, to learn that failure is, is okay. It's part of life. So I, I really appreciate, and we've been talking about this presentation, but I think, again, it's just another example of, of the passion. I know, I think Dr. Dixon's question is, is a good question, because that's what we've spoken about, is taking this and expanding it so that, you know, we talk about in every kids, in all kids of general, we want to make sure that every student has access to these rich learning environments, you know, and we really focus on the learner. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and, and this work. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. So our next agenda item is our third. It was number nine on our old agenda, field trip requests, which we need to consider. So request number one, was there a motion? Or does someone want to talk about this? Did you want to talk about it, Mr. Levis?
If the committee has questions, this is the middle school field trip, and this is some, a trip that's been done before, but there was a need, they needed to put a deposit down, and I went through the information and, and I kind of pre-approved it because there was a timeline, but officially, we also said it had to come before the committee. And this, this is kind of similar to the, the trip. Well, actually, I won't even say that. So if the committee has questions about...
Yeah, it was our reference number three, just to put you on the right track. Were there any questions before we move, or are we ready to move on this?
Ready to move, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the field trip request for the Everglades and Zion Team Eight grade students at Allen Trump Feinstein Middle School to travel to Washington DC from June 22, 2018 to June 25, 2018.
I second the motion.
Mrs. Printer's here, if you want to...
Any questions from the committee?
How many children are actually going on this trip?
I think Mrs. Printer and this here, right?
Twenty.
Twenty. Is that the total number of students on Team Zion, or is it just the number of people who have signed up for the trip?
So ten from Everglades, ten from Zion, and then there'll be RIDE, other parents.
So what percentage of the children on those teams are actually going on this trip? I'm just curious.
I think it's a hundred kids, ten percent maybe, ten percent.
Ten percent?
It's a hundred kids, a team. Hundred kids, a team, right?
We're like two, two hundred kids all together, but what it was, was it was part of an RTI group, of the two teams working together. It was three teachers that we met during RTI in the mornings. It was originally RTI. Jeff can speak about what we were doing.
Yeah, this was the Need Project, so we learned about energy transformations and that. We opened it up to every single student in both classes, and we were able to pay for students who are able to pay young, and, and we have some company sponsors and students.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I'm always concerned, because I'd like to see opportunities for all the students and, and the teams, so that if there are students who want to participate and perhaps are unable to do so because of limited funds, that we find a way to make it happen. So we're all for opportunity for all of our students. So when I hear the number of students and, you know, I know the number of students in the team, I get concerned because I don't want some to have more opportunity than others. Thank you.
It's, it's, it's all connected to the Need. If you read the conference information, it's all connected to the Need Youth Energy Conference and Awards. So those kids that participated in the before-school program around this topic are the kids that are going to this conference and awards ceremony in Washington DC. It's not a full-class trip to Washington DC.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Did we have a second?
We did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the second request, which is the CHS trip.
Madam Chair, I make a motion...
Well, I, I don't know if anybody want...
Well, I just want to say, this trip isn't till, until April of next year. So they're just bringing it forward, and I know Mr. Brissette's here, but this isn't, so there's time for every, all, every, all the documentation paperwork, and I think you put together a comprehensive package. But this isn't until April of 2019. Just wanted to make clear.
Okay, you can, we're ready for move.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the field trip request for Coventry High School students, grades 10 to 12, to travel to Washington DC, Philadelphia, and New York from April 12, 2018 to April 20, 2019.
I second the motion. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the public? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero. And our last agenda item for this evening will be the budget update and discussion. I don't know who wanted to discuss that.
I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson and Ms. Mangiorelli to, to come forward and let them take the lead on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Anderson. I am your legal counsel. I've been asked to be here tonight because you may have questions with regard to where we stand in the budget process. The superintendent had the budget item placed on the agenda. I am aware, I was not in attendance, because it was not a school committee meeting for the financial town meeting, and I have already obtained the six-hour tape of it, but I have not had an opportunity to start listening to the six-hour tape. I do have, I have talked, though, with numerous people who attended, and I have a general concept in terms of what happened at the budget meeting and where we stand. It's my opinion at this time, based on the information that I have received so far, that a motion was made to approve the school committee's budget, the school, the school department's budget. The school department's budget was approved, that there was a motion made to add some, a relatively small amount to that budget, that that motion was approved. And it's my opinion at this time, based on the information that I have, that as a result of that, the voters of the town have spoken, and that is the school department's budget to work with on a going-forward basis. That being said, I am also aware that the town meeting did not approve the tax levy. And obviously, to have a budget, you have to also collect taxes to pay for the budget. It is my thought, but it, I am, want to make it very clear, that I am not the town solicitor, that the, first of all, let me say with regard to our budget, I want to make it clear that, while I've given you what my opinion is, I want it, that the town manager, and I don't want to speak for him, but he has circulated a memo telling all departments, including the school department, that they're, at the moment, their budget is frozen at last year's level. It's my, I respectfully disagree with that statement with regard to the school department, but it's obviously, at this point, there is a disagreement. And when people disagree, people should proceed cautiously. It, with regard to the fact that there is no tax levy, I'm not the town solicitor, but I think it is incumbent on the part of the town council as quickly as possible to reconvene the financial town meeting and have a discussion on the items that they didn't resolve, and in particular, the tax levy, and that frankly, that the town council needs to get that financial town meeting put together before June 30. There is a notice period, I believe it is seven days, that the warrants have to be out and published. The council, I am satisfied, does have the authority to do that. This issue came up in Charlestown about 20 years ago, under somewhat similar circumstances, in a case named MAJEA, M-A-J-E-A-U, and the council reconvened the town meeting to continue to finish the town's, the town's business. So at this point, my advice to the committee, because you are my clients, is that you need to proceed slowly and carefully, but really, the ball is in the town council's court at this time to reconvene the town meeting and get the tax levy done. Does anybody have any questions for me? I also will say that I have started to have discussions with the town solicitor. I had a very cordial conversation with him this afternoon, where I expressed my thoughts. I am, you know, what the town is going to do is up to the town, the town manager, the town solicitor, and so forth, but again, I think they, I think they need to do something, and they need to do something quickly. Does anyone on the school committee have questions for me?
Anyone? No. James?
Yeah. If the town side council does not reconvene another FTM and resolve the tax levy conundrum, what is your opinion about where that puts us? Like, if we have a budget which exceeds the amount of revenue the town can collect, what the heck do we do next?
Well, my position is that the voters of the town approved a budget. So this is not a budget problem. This is a levy problem, and it's up to the town council to solve that problem, not the school committee. The voters spoke, and you can agree with the voters, you can disagree with the voters, but the voters clearly spoke at the town meeting. The levy is the council's issue. The one thing I would warn the council is that they need to get this done by June 30. You know, they, they need to move expeditiously in order to be able to have a budget in place by July 1.
It's kind of ironic that the town solicitor himself tried to pull that maneuver in 2013, but I digress. That's all I have. Thank you.
Another question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson, one of the motions that failed was to, for the town to accept grants. Does that involve the school committee at all because, or the school? Because we do get grants, we do get state and local aid, et cetera, well, state and federal aid. Does that motion have anything to do with our ability to get that money?
And I've, I've, I've become aware of the financial town meeting problems. I've had less than 48 hours.
Right.
And I focused the time that I spent on, first of all, can you recon, first of all, can you reconvene, and second of all, what's the state of your budget in general? The grant question is an excellent question. I have thought about the question, but I have not had time to look into that question. So I can't answer your question at that time. It's all the more reason, though, why the council needs to get a town, get, reconvene the town meeting and resolve these issues.
I'm relieved by the fact that you agree with me that since the school budget was passed, with the $212,000 attached, we will at least get another $202,000. Am I correct?
That is my, that is my opinion. But I want to make it very clear that the town manager has sent out an email to all department heads, including the superintendent of schools, that he, his opinion is that everything is frozen. And the reason why you have a lawyer, and the reason why the town has a lawyer, and the reason why people have lawyers in general, is the fact that people sometimes disagree. And at the moment, I am respectfully disagreeing with, with the town manager with regard to your budget. I believe that the voters spoke and that you have a budget. So if there is no further meeting held, you have a budget. The town council has a levy problem.
Legal recourse, if they do not feel that way, is there a legal recourse?
The legal recourse would be to have, go to Superior Court and ask a Superior Court to resolve it. But again, I would tell the school committee that you have the voters on your side. The voters were called to a meeting, a motion was made, the motion passed with regard to the school department's budget.
Overwhelmingly.
And I don't, with all due respect, Mr. Florio, if it passed by one vote, it passed. And as a result of it, it is my opinion that you have a budget. I am also telling you, though, that, and I don't want you to be surprised, that the town manager has said all budgets are frozen. He did not carve out the school department. I have begun a conversation with your town solicitor this afternoon about that. I expect that that conversation will continue in the next few days. It was a very preliminary conversation, and I will continue to represent your interests in those conversations. I'm just telling where you're coming from, number one. Number two, that there needs to be a town meeting to finish the town business, but I'm also telling you that you need to proceed slowly for the next few days while the lawyers sort this out, either because we all agree, and I'm perhaps persuade people, or if we don't disagree, that we have a judge say who's right.
I just have one other question, too. Is it possible for the town council to go back to square one or not? In other words, call an FTM, you know, do the announcement, do budget hearings, listen to the people, come up with a different budget, and actually do, go through the whole process again, do a, you know, a month out, that you get notified them and all that stuff?
I, I have not, I have not researched that question. What I will tell you, though, my, what I would look for when I was researching is there's various timelines for, quote, "starting all over," and the problem is June 30 is, what, 17 days, 17 days away?
I know, and our charter says you need a month out when you announce a new FTM.
Right, right. But our trip, but you're only 17 days away from the end of the fiscal year. I do know that in Charlestown, about 20 years ago, they had a, a problem where the town meeting did not vote, and I believe it was on salaries for town officers, and they had to bring everybody back. And they did, and there was no question about the authority of the council to bring, to bring people back. This, you know, we, we are plowing new ground here. I would hope it would be best for the town if this was done on a cooperative, mutually-respect basis, because there are other people watching the town. The town has bond ratings, which is, you know, like the town's credit rating at stake. It's probably not very helpful to your credit rating that you announce that you're not going to pay your bills. I think that there are concerns that are much bigger than here that could be implicated by that. And that's why I want to proceed carefully and slowly. Later in the agenda, you have an item of recalling teachers. I am recommending to you tonight that you...
We're not doing it.
That, pardon me?
It was already taken.
We already took it off.
You took it off. I apologize. I, I endorse, though, the decision to take it off, because we need to gather more information. And again, I tell clients all the time, if you want a guarantee, hire an insurance company, not a lawyer. I've told you what my belief, though, is.
And so I have one final question. It's like the doomsday, it's the doomsday machine kind of thing. If the town council decides, okay, so it's a taxing authority thing, so we need to go back to the public and ask for them to approve this, and the voters turn it down again, what are the legal ramifications of that? I mean...
My position will be that you have a budget, and they have an obligation to fund it. And how they choose to fund it is not the responsibility of the school committee. It is the responsibility of the town council, and I, on that issue, I am not going to tell them how to do their job.
And so last year's vote at the town financial meeting that said they had the taxing authority for last year's fiscal nine, you know, 18 budget, is that still in effect? So they...
I do not, I, I do not, I, I, my research... I do not, I, I do not, I, I, my research to date, and I'm not the town solicitor, but my research to date was, what was your budget? And how, you know, did your budget stand up, or did your budget go up in smoke as well? And my position is, is that the voters approved your budget, and that you have a budget, and the prop, the people who have to sort out all the questions that you're asking today is the town council. Again, I had a cooperative and pleasant conversation with Mr. Gorham today. I will continue to have a cooperative relationship with him, but I have made it very clear that it is my opinion that the school department has a budget that was the one the council recommended, plus the 200 odd thousand that was approved by the voters. And where the money comes from that is the council's job.
All right. Thank you. Sarah?
I just want to jump in from a financial perspective.
Yep.
While the legal opinion is what it is, just from a financial perspective, what I'm looking at is I did send out an email that I'm not accepting any FY19 supply orders as of right now, until we have a clear direction what's going on. It's common for teachers to submit their FY19 orders before they leave. So that's simply on hold right now. Fortunately, our spending over July and August is less because our salary is less. We're still paying the previous fiscal year's salary. So we can kind of control our expenses over July and August, even if we had to implement something as a 1/12 of the FY18 budget, as a short-term perspective. From the levy perspective, while we would have a budget, and again, this is the responsibilities, based on legal opinion, that it's the town's responsibilities, it would pose a significant cash flow. And my biggest concern would be that cash on hand to, to pay our bills, even though it is the town on the checks. It's still our employees and our vendors. So those would be my concerns from a financial perspective at this time. But until we have further information, it doesn't make sense to kind of jump the gun and make any adjustments yet.
Madam Chair, I have a question on that.
Yes, go ahead, sure.
So you mentioned you're delaying supply orders. Are you collecting the orders and just holding on to them? Because I would be concerned that if these are coming from teachers, they're leaving soon on break. And if there is a delay in our ability to at least collect those supply orders, we may not be getting supplies in time for the start of the school year.
Right. It's not uncommon for us to still receive orders over the summer, even while they're on vacation. As of right now, to be perfectly honest with you, if that situation where it was viewed that we didn't have a budget, while we just heard legal say that the position right now is that we do have a budget, my very real concern was that I was going to have to look for another 1.5 million out of the budget. And at that point in time, to even say people go through this exercise, there's not 1.5 to cut from this budget, especially not in those areas. So as of right now, it's on hold. If I can lift that and say, okay, submit the orders. But I also want to give time for people to do a thorough inventory. That is something that we're going to be pushing, is that we're not just doing blanket orders this year. So we're kind of changing up the ordering process anyways. Unfortunately, we're just kind of caught in a little bit of a time lag right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee for?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, Mr. Levitt, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're chomping down our supper, which is lifesavers.
So one of the things that we had talked about was the last day for teachers is the 21st, correct? And so one of the things we may want to consider, if we don't, aren't able to recall teachers within seven days, right now, we have a meeting that's scheduled for the 28th. We might want to move that up to the 27th, just to be, be safe, because hopefully, hopefully things will work themselves out so that we can then, we don't have to pay unemployment. So that's something I just want to throw out there. And like, like Mr. Anderson said, we've already talked about, you know, before I spoke to Mr. Anderson, we've already talked about, you know, if we need to cut the 1.5, because that whole situation that, that transpires or kicks in would be, we get 1/12 of last year's month by month, which means we can't rob Peter to pay Paul. We can't spend money that we might be getting in August, in July, and hoping. So we'd have to do drastic things, right? There's no end for buts. And, but that's on hold right now. But I feel that if we move that meeting up to the 27th, it gives us time, you know, we'll have, hopefully, this will be resolved, being optimistic. And then we can do the business we need to do before we go, you know, before June 30th. So-
So that one extra day really will be-
Yeah. I, I think it makes, I think it makes sense to do that. You know, I can send something out to the committee and, and check with everybody, but I feel that would be prudent at this point. Do you agree, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll check our counts, I guess. Any questions from the public for Mr. Anderson and/or Mrs. Minjirelli? Yep.
So I guess at this point in time, with the conflicting opinions, whether it be the town manager's letter to, I guess, the department, which I was unaware of, or Mr. Anderson's legal opinion at this point in time, does the superintendent of the school committee need to respond to the town manager's letter? So there's a record saying that we respectfully disagree, or we concur, or it just seems that you leave yourself in limbo, and I was just, just wondering.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
I, I, this is my opinion. I'm not an attorney, and nor do I play one anywhere.
Not even on TV.
No, not, no, no. Got the face for radio here. Come on. But my belief is that, you know, based on, you know, that letter came out the following day, right? And, and anybody that was there or watched it, you know, and had, you know, I, I think that's, you know, again, I, I am not putting words in his mouth or speaking for him. But I believe that was the belief, that was a lot of our belief. That was my belief before I spoke to Mr. Anderson. So I, I believe that he was putting something together to communicate to everybody where he believed it stood. And I'm, I'm comfortable right now, I, I don't feel the need to challenge that letter. I'm comfortable having Mr. Anderson work with Mr. Gorham and see where that process, you know, gets us to like by next Tuesday or something like that. That's, I'm comfortable doing that. I don't feel I need to put in writing unless you disagree.
I had my first conversation with Mr. Gorham today. It was very pleasant and cordial. I think that at some point, we do need to draw the line. I agree with the superintendent that we need to, I, I made my pitch, for lack of a better term, to Mr. Gorham, and Mr. Gorham listened. And I need to give him an opportunity to talk with his client, the town manager, and the town council, and so forth. And then if I don't, however, get a response, and I think Tuesday is a fair day, if I, if this is not buttoned down by Tuesday, I respect Mrs. Aronakis' suggestion that we put something in writing, and I will, unless the school committee objects, I will put something in writing indicating what my opinion is, is that the school department has a budget and that the town needs to be, that was approved by the voters, and that the town needs to be prepared to fund it, and that the school committee will, is relying on that budget.
Okay.
So let's give the town manager a couple of days, because I have no idea, to be fair to that gentleman, whether my argument has been given to him by his, by his lawyer. And if, but if it's not, if we can't get it pinned down by agreement in the next few days, then yes, I will send a communication.
All right. No further questions? Seeing none, I need a motion for the, first of all, before we recess into executive, thank you all for coming and for your participation tonight. I'd like a motion to recess into executive session at 8:15.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recess into executive session at 8:15.
I second the motion.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patton.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Ian Dixon.
Yes.
Donna Coloneum.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you.
I get paid to do this.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to know.
All right. So we'll see you later.